Ten o'clock? I'd like to call this, to order this regular meeting of the Union Township Zoning Board of Appeals. Tara, can we have a roll call?
Talk about pledge.
Oh, thank you, sorry. That's okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bars?
Here.
Coin? Oops, I'm sorry. Let me go off this little one. Clark?
Here.
McDonald?
Here.
Presnell?
Here.
Rogers?
Here.
We have four. Awesome. Thank you, Tara. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Welcome our new board members, there's a few of them. Since the last time we met, it couldn't have really been, the last time was November 1, 2023. But, there you have it. So if I'm a little rusty up here, that's why. It's been a year since we, since we were all here together. The purpose of tonight's meeting, we're going to do election of officers and then go through a couple of variant requests. I think the first order of business will be the approval of the agenda. Everyone should have a copy of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved?
Lord.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Say nay. The motion carries. Next on the agenda is correspondence and board reports. Does anyone have anything to report? Alright, looks like we can move on from that. No one has anything to report. Next up is public comment.
Approval of the minutes.
Oh, I'm, I'm moving in different spaces here. Approval of the minutes from that last meeting on November the 3rd of 2024-3.
Twenty-three.
That's crazy, twenty-three. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second. Motion carries. Who second that? McDonald?
Yes.
Still need a vote on it?
Oh, we have to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. There you go. Alright, now we're on to public comment for items that are not on the agenda. So, we'll open the floor for public comment. We invite public to comment on items not on tonight's agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes. If you'd like to speak, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. If you're attending online, please click the raise hand icon. If you're joining by phone, press nine to raise your hand. Public comment is now open at 7:03. I don't have anyone online. Wonderful. Public comment is now closed at 7:03. Alright, we're on to new business. Item A, election of officers. We are looking for nominations. We'll start with chair. Would anyone like to make a nomination for chair?
I nominate Liz Presnell for chair.
I, I'm gonna pass on that, thank you though. Any other nominations for chair?
Nominate Rick Bars.
I would second that nomination. Does he have to agree to it, Rodney?
He hasn't said anything.
Do what?
He hasn't said anything, but you, you, you should close the nominations and then you can vote on that as a motion.
Okay. Any other nominations for chair before I close the nomination? All in favor of Rick Bars as chair? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Just me.
Motion carries.
At this point?
Oh!
Now, Rick is the chair.
Oh boy, well.
Well, that's fast.
Well, well, Rick, do you want to trade seats?
Oh, no, I'm fine.
Okay, you can stick, do you, okay.
This is the gavel.
I, I will at least pass you my gavel, Rick.
Be careful.
It's the best part of the job.
That's all.
Moving on to vice chair. Any nominations for vice chair?
Actually, Rick can take it from here.
Oh, Rick?
He's down the chair.
Oh! Well, what am I even still doing here, Rodney? Alright, no, I'm still here, alright.
Okay, do we have any nominations for vice chair?
I nominate Lori.
Okay, we have a nomination for Lori Rogers. Is there a support?
All support.
Okay, we have a motion support. Is there any further nominations for vice chair? Hearing none? For to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next is secretary. We need nominations for the position of secretary. Is there any nominations?
Nominate Nivea.
Sure.
If we have a motion, do we have a support?
Support.
Motion and support for Nivea. Is there any further nominations? All those in favor, for Nivea as secretary, please, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Congratulations, everyone. Okay, now, this is, the new business, this is going to be the PVAR 2501. Applicant requests a 948 suite foot variance from section 7.5C3. Do I have to read this entire thing?
It's for the audience, it's also for those on video.
Sure, okay. Accessory uses, building structures, detached accessory buildings, size, height, and number. Rear yard setback requirements for a principal building located at East River Road, PID 14003-30-001-25, an approximate 7.5 acre parcel zone R2A, one and two family, low-density residential district located in the southwestern quarter of section three. At this point, I need to have updates from the staff.
Thank you. Everybody should have a copy of our report, dated October 30th. As was said, this is a dimensional variance. As we know in our report, it's, they're proposing to add to this building, the expanded building would be about 60% larger than, than the maximum allowed, which is 1,500 square feet. Right now, the building's actually a little bit larger. It's an existing non-conforming building, it's at 1,728 square feet. The, there's some initial factors that we just noted on our report, they are actually kind of secondary to the simple case, this is a dimensional variance. They're asking for, for the variance for 948 square feet additional above what the ordinance allows. The additional factors are, the building is, is occupied by a, by a home occupation, a sign shop, that it's, was legally established there, sort of after the fact legally established. It was granted a home occupation permit in 2009. It was actually established before that. It was granted a home occupation permit in 2009. It is not, that type of business is not a lawful home occupation today, but, under the current ordinance and the current home occupation standards. But that simply means it's what's called a legal non-conforming use. It's allowed to remain there forever, they can continue to operate it, no issue with that at all, they just are operating it under the standards that were approved at the time. The, the other, the, the, one thing we noted in this report is that, although the applicant has asked for variance, there is another way to solve this problem that we recommended to the applicant when we had conversation with them, and that was a rezoning of the land. This is on a vacant parcel. If you've been out there, you've seen there's several houses there along with Mount St. Louisville Share Drive, but the, the, the building is on the large vacant lot, and as we know in our report, this is, this, where the building is, is really beyond the edge of our, our utility district. It's beyond the edge of our sanitary sewer service. But more importantly, the master plan indicates this area to either be agricultural or rural residential in character. And, so it, it, it would be a suitable site to actually rezone it. Right now, it's, it's a fairly dense urban style or suburban style residential district, but if it were to be rezoned consistent with the master plan, either to, to the AG Agricultural District or to the R1 Rural Residential District, they would actually be able to put a, a larger building on the site than they, than, than what exists there now. They, they would still not be able to get fully to the, the proposed 2,448 square feet, but they can get very close, because the, the, those districts allow it to 2,400 square feet. So, it's possible that with the rezoning, that they would not need a variance at all with a minor adjustment to the size of the building, or size of the addition. But the ordinance also would allow them to build simply a new building, a second building on, on the property to, to get where they need to go. So the, the, that is an option for them, it's, it's a different process, it, it does require a bit more time than a variance application does, because it requires a planning commission public hearing and ultimately requires action by our board of trustees. So it's, it's a process that can take several months simply to meet the state zoning act requirements. But it is a process that would be more consistent with our master plan. Beyond that, as I said, this is, this is really a pretty simple case. The applicant has, has provided information indicating why they would like the additional space. The letter from Mr. Beebe talks a lot about the business. I will say that the business is essentially immaterial to the question of the, the dimensional variance. The criteria that you're reviewing are all, really look at, are there unique circumstances related to the land or related to the structure itself that warrant a variance? So, we're not talking about the business, although Mr. Beebe does in his letter, it really does not apply to the, to the question. The question is really, is there, are there unique conditions about the land or the structure that warrant the variance? The, the business simply exists, it's legal in the sense that it has home occupation permit, they're operating consistent with it, and, and so it's, it's immaterial to the question of dimensional variance. So the question for you is really, first of all, has the applicant provided documentation to show that they meet the criteria for variance? Or do you find as part of the public hearing process, your deliberations, that they meet these, these standards? If variance, in all variance cases, a variance should only be granted if you find that they meet the, the criteria for variances listed in the ordinance and highlighted in our report. And so with that, as we go along, happy to answer your questions on behalf.
Can we ask, at this point, can we ask you questions before we open public hearing?
Sure, anytime.
The question is, if they, they're requesting a variance tonight, in the future, if they wanted to have a request to remain property, so can that be done another time?
Could they, can they have their cake and eat it too?
Yeah, exactly.
Absolutely. Anybody can ask for a rezoning of the property. You know, it's interesting, and I'm not a lawyer, so I can't really answer the legal element of this, but the variance is based on the current zoning. So if you change the zoning, I, we'd really probably want to talk to our, to the township attorney and see if that would affect the variance. Because the variance is based on the R2A zoning category that's right now. So if they, if they're interested in going the rezoning route, they really should go that route.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have questions? Yes, Frank?
So, is there any implications to why it's an accessory building and not a primary residence and it's the only dwelling on this?
So, this is one of the interesting questions. The, home occupation is a necessary use. The idea is that, is this is a business activity that is associated with somebody living on the same lot. You know, you can think of a lawyer that has a home office, for example, is a very simple home occupation. Some more complicated ones could be a barber, you know, so he has a barber or beauty, beauty station in their house and they, they cut people's hair or do nails or whatever. There are, there are limitations, the ordinance, as to how, what types of uses can be a home occupation, how big they can be, how much land, area they can occupy. But there's a, you can have a variety of home occupations, but they are normally associated with a house in the same lot. This is one of the questions that came up way back when. This, this business has started on this, on this site without any permits, essentially after the fact, the zoning administrator at the time, Woody Woodruff, worked with the owners, notified them, as you've seen in the report, notified them of the issue, worked with them, ultimately took the matter to the planning commission, and asked the planning commission to consider granting this home occupation permit. They, they took the ordinance and stretched it a bit. There was a pretty broad interpretation made by, by the zoning administrator and the, and the planning commission, because what they did was they interpreted that, that the Maury family's home, which is on a separate lot, that these, this is a tract of land that's all under their ownership, several lots, but all under their same ownership. They simply viewed the, the tract, the several parcels, as one zoning lot essentially. And, and that's fine, they did that, they interpreted, they approved it, it's fine. And, but so, for purposes of this home occupation, we, we, we view it the same way, that the Maury family's home, although it's on a separate, separate lot, is connected to this, this one. So, one of the keys to this, their approval back then, was that this building had to be considered an accessory structure, a secondary to that home. Because if it was a primary structure, essentially it could only be used for agricultural purposes, whatever the zoning allowed at the time.
And it gets its secondary property because it's using the same driveway as that other dwelling, isn't it?
Yeah, if that's a whole other, yeah, there were a number of complications, things that should not have been done that were, things that would not be done if somebody were building it today and, and actually got a permit ahead of time for it. But, but the key is, as far as the ordinance is concerned, it is an accessory building, yeah, or accessory structure.
Any other questions? Rodney. Okay. So then, go on to the, get the public hearing. That's what the applicant, the applicant speaks.
Pardon? Yes. You know, the introductory, you could ask for updates from the applicant.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, got it. Okay. Sure, I'm sorry, open the public hearing.
No, I would, I would invite the applicant to speak before the hearing, give them a chance to.
Oh, from the state, oh, and the applicant, I'm sorry, didn't see that. Okay, yeah, would someone representing the applicant please take podium?
Good evening. My name's Tim Beebe, I'm with Central Michigan Surveying Development. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. The applicant is Maury Sines, and it's Ron Maury, who's in the audience. One of the things that I'd like to do is pass out, I noticed in the, in the packet that at least I had, we had the wrong letter, but, there you go. When I first looked at this, you have to understand I am colorblind, the yellow, and the yellow of R1 and R1, or R2A look very similar to me. So, when I first wrote the letter, I wrote it up as R1, this is as R2. It was turned back into Peter, but obviously mixed the letters up one bit. Some of the things that I'd like to, like to point out on this, although we're not supposed to talk about business, but this is a business that has functioned out of that site for 20 years. When you are a business and you are classified as an existing non-conforming, it's a death sentence to growth of your business. I'm a business owner. If I cannot expand my business, then I can't have my business there. Well, what's my options? Oh, well, you'll have to move. Well, that's nice, who's paying for that? That's a major expense. We built a building, we've had the business. At this point, what I need to be able to do is not just have one vehicle inside in the warmth, so that I can put stickers on year-round, I need to be able to have two. Well, I have too much other things taking up the space, so I can't get a second vehicle in there. So why is it that we need additional cold storage? It's to move some of the things out of there, so that the existing structure that is there can actually be utilized to its fullest. So, if I have a business, I've been doing it out of that same building for 20 years, my business is growing, and I need more space, I'm being told, well, that's great that your business is expanding, but you're just not going to be able to do it here. Why don't you go find someplace else? I'd ask, Mr. Maury, if you had to find someplace else, would you stay in Union Township?
No.
Why is that?
The restrictions are beyond.
Okay, well, let's talk about some of those restrictions. Some new restrictions that have been put on. This is not necessarily the purview of the zoning board of appeals, but they can make a recommendation to the planning commission as it relates to the ability for accessory structures. This is a 7.7 acre parcel that is allowed to have a 1,500 square foot building. It's also limited in its height. When you look at the land area and the square footage, you are looking at less than half of 1% of the land area you're allowed to have as a building. So if you're sitting out in the countryside and you have a 7.7 acre parcel, you're not allowed to build a 40 by 40 wood building with your house, irregardless if it's a business. Let's take business off the table. This is the ordinance that this community has. We're working with another client, similar thing, he had to join properties together until he could get over 10 acres, so that he could actually get the sized building to put the horse trailer and fifth wheel indoors that he wanted to put in. Then he had to go to a special roof design, so that he could actually get a door that's tall enough. The restrictions that we have in the ordinance, this changed ordinance from the old ordinance that this was originally put under, restricts the size and height of the buildings to what I consider to be an extreme. And I've got a number of people that would come in and tell you the same thing, that if I have 10 acres, or I have nine acres, and I can only build 2,400 square feet, who are you to tell me that I can only build 2,400 square feet? I'm in an ag district, and I can only build 2,400 square feet, unless it's pure farming. Pure farming, you're not going to be able to restrict. So, we not only have a situation here where we have a business that has been classified as an existing non-conforming use, in an existing non-conforming building, so you can't expand the use or expand the building, you can't do anything with your business, and it's a business that has been in our community for a long time, and you just heard from the business. from the business owner that if he's forced to move, he'll be leaving this community. That's not the atmosphere that we want to have here. I have a business in this community. I don't want to see people moving out of it. So although we're not supposed to take into account the business, that is exactly what we need to take into account. Now, there is the option of rezoning the property. Problem is, the landowners have built duplexes down that private drive and may want to build more. So do they rezone the property so that they can't do that, so that they can expand their It's, it's a very tough situation that they've got. So, we're here pleading our case, hoping that you see the benefit of keeping businesses in this community and allowing them to utilize the finished areas of their existing building and allow them to add a cold storage area so that they have the ability to use the maximum floor space that is needed. We hope that you will encourage a business to stay here. I'm sorry that you were given the one that was written up as an R2 or an R1 instead of the R2A, but the unique circumstances, I don't think you're going to find a more unique circumstance than the one that you have here. Should all of this been done back 20 years ago? Maybe, maybe not. But it was. They have functioned their business there since 2005. Now we're being told, it's great that you're growing, but maybe this isn't the place for you. How many other situations do you think you're going to find yourself in where people are coming in and asking for this? I don't think very many. Preservation of property rights. Well, it was his right at the time to have that business and it sounds, it sounds pretty flowery, but that, that American dream of owning your own business and working for yourself and expanding and growing. But the preservation of his right to do that on his own property and not being forced to leave, I think that's a preservation of, of a property right that, that needs to be preserved. Practical difficulty. Well, the practical difficulty is, I'm running out of space. I own all this land. I don't have to go buy something else. All I want to do is put a lien to on and move some things out. Substantial justice, in my view, is whether or not the township was correct at the time or not it was allowed. It has continued and all he's looking for is to be able to continue his business. So, I hope that you take it, all of that into consideration. I know that each case has to be viewed on its own merits and I hope that you consider the merits of this case. I thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, is there anybody else representing applicant at this point? Okay. At this one, we will open public hearing for the side of Ms. Speakers will have three to five minutes to comment. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Is, is there anyone here like to address this, the, the board?
Yeah, I'll go first. My name is Chris Pryor. My, I guess I would be the one that's most correctly affected by the Maury's. I look, their property butts right up to mine. I've lived beside them for what, 22 years? So I guess I would have been there when the original building was built and I don't see any issue at all with what they're trying to build. As I said, listened to this, I understand there's a quote letter of the law and there's letter variances, but there's also, I think, a spirit too that can be looked at. And I'm going to kind of do an apples and oranges probably from my former life, but I'm sure every single one of us has sped down the highway and the law says you could go a certain speed. And so the police enforced every law, is that practical? So there's a spirit in the law and I guess that's what I'm asking for the Maury's here. It's only 900 and somewhat square feet. I, I can see what they've already got dug out. It doesn't, it doesn't fade me at all. Like I said, it butts, my property butts right up to theirs. They've been awesome neighbors. I, I just don't know, I, I, I understand maybe whatever happened in the past, what, what can be done about that? That's done, it's over. And they've been, they've been awesome influence in the community. I know that they've done a lot of support for the, the support and I know you certainly talked about not the business, but really yes, it is about the business. It's their name and what they do for the community and they're trying to put a lien to on just for some cold storage so they can continue to, to invest in the community and, and not only for this generation, but for generations to come. And, so I guess what I'm asking is they take into consideration their request, that you honor that request and everything can be done on a case by case basis. If we, any type of court of law you go into, it's done on a case by case basis. Again, if we did it all by the letter of the law, I think every single one of us would be guilty in here, even if something simple is speeding. So, that's all I gotta say.
Mr. Pryor?
Yes, sir.
For the, for the record, could I have your address, please?
Yeah, it's 921 Windstone Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anyone else representing the applicant?
I don't have anyone on mine either.
You don't have anyone on mine? Okay. Okay, seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Now this, at this point, we'll have board discussion. Okay, at this, are there any questions or any comments from the board members?
I'm new at this, but I think there's a lot to be taken into consideration that things were allowed so long ago and I understand rules, we have more rules because there's more chaos. I get all that. But I think there's some different factors here involved that are worth considering a variance, just because again, it's, it's not, and case by case is the perfect, perfect way of saying it. This is already here, already established.
It feels like you're kind of speaking to unique circumstances on the standards for review, so I don't, I don't know if that, if there was a question you have, but I think...
Definitely a unique situation, yes, yeah.
So what would be the detriment of going forward and allowing this? Would there be a precedent set that would just, that something's going to, down the road, we would come back and look at this and say, we shouldn't have done this? Is there something like that that would be going on if we granted the variance? And then also with the variance, is there some sort of process where we have to ask nearby neighbors to be able to, and we heard from Mr. Pryor, but I don't know if there's other neighbors around that have conflicting interests as well, if there's that process?
I can speak to that. Pardon? I can speak to that. Yeah, could you? I'll just, the second part first. The public hearing process under the State Zoning Act, as part of that, we, we send out notices by mail to all the, all the landlords within 300 feet, all the property owners of record within 300 feet of the, of the, of the parcel question. So, so all the neighbors should have been notified, that, that notice contains the same information that's on your agenda. And so everyone that, that has an interest should have seen that notice. The notice is also published in the newspaper, in the Morning Sun, and it's posted on our website and it's here at the hall too, but, but, so it's available in a number of forums. In all those cases, it's, it's done at least 15 days before the hearing. So there's, there's substantial amount of time to take a look at things. The question about, about harm, the, the key here is really, we have a zoning ordinance, it has a set of rules, those rules were adopted ultimately by our board of trustees. They certainly, the planning commission was involved in that. We adopted this, this current ordinance in, in 2020. The accessory structure section, I think, was amended at some point after that to make some adjustments to it. I don't recall whether the adjustments made it easier or harder. I think actually, I think it may have made it easier, but, to build, but anyway, it's something where this, this, these regulations were reviewed and, and adopted, public hearing processes were held, public meetings were held, and ultimately, as I said, the board of trustees adopted these, these standards. And they are, they are, they are an ordinance, they're not guidelines, they're not suggestions. So, you have, you have a very important role. You have almost a unique role in local government in that you have the ability to grant a license to break the law. That's really what a variance is. It's a license, a limited license, to break the law. In that, in that role, you act together as a board, you act as a judge and, and that, and you make a judgment call. And, and so, as was noted, you have pretty broad scope and, and you absolutely can consider everything that you've received, everything you've heard. If you feel that you don't have enough information to make a decision, you can postpone action and ask for that additional information, either ask it of staff or ask it of the applicant. But you have broad, broad authority here to, because ultimately, as I said, you are granting the license, if you grant a variance, you're granting a license to break this law, this ordinance. The key is you have, you do have boundaries and those boundaries come from the state act. They're written out in the, in the criteria that are in our report, that are in the section of the ordinance. And it, it is important to remain within them, that, that, you, you can consider all the factors, absolutely. Whatever decision you make, you want to document it. And that's why in the, in the draft motions, there's plenty of space there for you to document, document the reasons why you did this. Because, because this is a kind of quasi judicial action, any action can ultimately end up in court. We, we have had a previous case when zoning board appeals end up in court and, and, and when it goes to court, the judge is looking at your minutes, looking at your motions, looking at what you did and why you did it. So the why you did it is important and the why you did it should tie right back to those criteria for action on the variance, either pro or con. So that's my, my suggestion is, this is not simply approving it because, because you've heard a great story, an important one, and we do want to support businesses in this community. This is a business that township uses. They, they do the work on, the detailing for our trucks, so they're important to us as well as to many others. But it, but no matter what you do, it's important that you document it and that you stick to, to reasons that are consistent with those criteria so that it's a legally defensible decision, should anyone want to appeal it. So, I'm not saying anybody's going to, but we, we always want to act as if it's something that, that may need to be legally defended in court. So, that's, that's, I guess that's, if the township attorney was here, that's what he would say, so I'll, I'll share that. But ultimately, this is really a decision about whether to allow these, these folks to break the law and, and that's, that's a big deal and so that's a big impact. You, I'll add one more, that was precedent. Each case is unique. However, if you start seeing a pattern of these, and certainly in this case, we're not seeing a pattern, we've won and it's been two years since we had last had a meeting. But if we start seeing a pattern of things, then there, there may be a need to do something else, like amend the ordinance. But that's, that's really only the case where there might be a precedent element in that we're seeing a pattern of the same kind of issue. So it, whatever you do here is unique to this particular property, this particular proposal.
I think on the standards for review, I mean, where I keep hovering is unique circumstances. This one feels very much like a unique circumstance specific to the land or structures involved in all the background and not probably applicable to other land structures in the same district only because it is such a unique circumstance. So I think that's kind of where I'm, I'm hovering on those standards for review. We can go through the others if you guys want to.
No, I like that. Now, do we just have a defensible reason? Now that you've said that, do we have a defensible reason if LaBelle management or James Spanger...
I would encourage you to identify what the unique circumstances are. You want to go beyond just simply acknowledging they met that criteria? You want to, you want to say why? What is it about that that you feel satisfies the, the criteria? And one thing to keep in mind is this section is quoted in the bottom of page three of our report. The, it says, "The CBA shall have, have authority to grant non-use variances where owing to special conditions, strict enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship or practical difficulty, subject to the zoning act, the state zoning act requirements, and the following eight standards for review. The, a variance shall not be granted unless all of the standards are met." So it's really, you want to be looking at all of them and be looking at what are the, and, and any, any motion you make in favor of variance, you just want to make sure you identify the reasons why they meet that, those criteria.
Good point though, Brian, thank you.
Yeah, that's where I would like to get to, if we give it an affirmative, that we can safely sit somewhere and be able to defend our, our actions. Some good point.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board?
I agree with the comments so far, that this is unique. I mean, there's, you go over from practical difficulty to whatever, but there, where they, they built their home, they built their business, they built, and then things got built around them. It was subdivision left, subdivision right, you know, so it's being squeezed in and the offshoot of that is zoning changes and the result is again, coming here because there's, there's requests and there's things that are needed. So it's up to our board here to, to try to make this right on behalf of the township and people.
So, I just want to make sure about something. So the duplexes that are on the other side of the property are owned by them as well, correct?
Yes.
Or the family or the business or however it's divided, it isn't really important. So I think, thinking about it as them building a business and them being encroached upon by residences is kind of a non-starter because they created that issue themselves. I mean, I'm not saying it's bad or good, it's just they put them there. And then we hear from Mr. Beebe, they might want to build more duplexes and that rezoning it would hinder their progress in that, but then not, you know, so I guess they're, I feel like they've kind of put themselves between a rock and hard spot as far as the ordinance and the zoning goes. The letters kind of make it sound like it's been pressed upon them, but I don't know that that's necessarily true.
Now, are there any other questions or comments for the board?
Just curious, do you think this variance is good for their expanding business for five years, for 10 years? What's going to happen? Expand, doing great, which we love, but how do we see future expansion so we're not back here again?
Right, like where does it stop?
I mean, how do we do it for them so that they can feel comfortable, that they can, yes, we're ready to market and bring in more without having a hindrance on their building size and having to move to another, another location? Is there anything we can do there today?
See, at this point, the only thing we, we can do at this point is, is to like, look at the proposal right now. We have, we have a proposal. Down the road, if they, if the Maury's decide to go to rezoning, you know, whatever is, to, to expand their business, that's up to them.
Okay.
Any other comments?
And I think something Rodney said also, reading each of these standards for review, that they...
that they, that we're correct in granting the variance based on these, on these set of rules for guidance, we have followed these.
Right, yes, the, the, if I may explain this. Yeah, the, the, the standards are on page four and five of, of our report, page fifteen, sixteen of the packet. Uh, the standards are in black with the white text. Those are taken directly from the ordinance, A through, was it A through H? Yeah. Uh, those are the, the, those are the standards in the ordinance that, that you're required to follow as you're looking at these cases.
Okay. I know you're skimming over them right now. We can take a minute to go, take, do you want to relook at these before, before we go further? Yeah, I'm almost done. I know we've had them, but they're, they're, um, you know, all changes, when you respect the changes on things.
A little more information. I saw we have a little more information on how to apply it.
Yes, exactly.
Right.
Can you address how we would be able to substantiate that it's not self-created?
Well, it doesn't have to apply to everything. It could be, it could meet one or two of the standards for review. It doesn't have to meet all of them.
No, the ordinance is all.
I love it's all.
Oh, does it, oh.
So should we go through them one by one?
I think we should.
Do you want, did you want to go through these one by one? Okay. Uh, practical difficulty. Anybody have any questions on this or any comments on it?
I mean, I think, yeah, I think there are practical difficulties there, but, um, but it does note that it's already larger than what it should be.
One suggestion I would make again is, like I said, whatever you do, you want to have the reasons why in your motion. So you may want to be noting those reasons why. And you're just, in this case, you mentioned practical difficulties. You want to think about what is the practical difficulty that, that triggers the need for variance? And actually just kind of make a note of that, because then that should be something cited in your motion.
Does the motion have to have, say, all these are met or does it have to just one of them or two?
If you, if you look ahead a little bit, uh, like I said, we, we just included some templates.
Got it.
That, uh, you said really it's just the information from the agenda pack in the beginning.
Right.
Prove, deny, prove the conditions. In each case, uh, the action, it's, it says at the end, that you, whatever the action is, is being taken for, it underlined there, for the following reasons. And then of course, a bunch of blanks there. You just want to, that's where you want to cite the reasons why. If there's practical difficulty, what is the practical difficulty, right? And just have it noted there. If there is a unique circumstance, what is the unique circumstance? And leave it noted. And, and this is, this is the documentation that, that makes it, it makes it a legally defensible decision. Not just that you decided that they're practical difficulties, but what are they? And as I said, you have broad ability to decide what those things are. But you just want to make sure that they're, they're, they end up in whatever motion you, uh, posit or negative.
So if we say no, how will that deprive them of the same building that other, that their neighbors have? That's what we're saying here on number, on, on letter A. You know, what was, how will we deprive you now from their neighbors that are building the exact same thing? That's within the fifteen hundred square feet?
I'm not, because it's already bigger than what's allowed.
It's already bigger. Does that mean they can just go gargantuan?
Right.
I need to, how do we write this? Need the practical difficulty is that they move. That's what's going to happen. But everybody in that area that wants to build twenty-four, forty-eight has to move unless they have ten acres or more. Is that how I understand it?
That's, Mr. Chair, may, may I, excuse me, so may I answer this, the question?
I'm new at this.
I, I understand, absolutely. And, um, I understand they talked about moving the business. The business is allowed, it's lawful there, it can remain there forever. It was allowed at the size it is. Which, now, the size it is is seventeen hundred and twenty-eight square feet, that size of that building. If they're using some of the building for not, things that are not business, absolutely, they could, they could move that stuff out and, and expand the business into it as they proposed. But, but that's the size that they were allowed. This property was never zoned commercial. It was never zoned properly for this business. The home occupation rules were a very limited exception essentially to allow certain, a limited amount of business activity. In this case, as I said, after the fact, they were essentially granted that home occupation permit for something that was really not in compliance with the ordinance. But they've granted it, they now it's made lawful. But that shows something to keep in mind is that we're not talking about, uh, we have to save them from moving the business. They can have that business there forever. They can, and they can certainly use every one of that, those seventeen hundred and twenty-eight square feet for the business activity. The, what it would suggest, uh, your job is, is actually, your, your number one job is to, to, to protect the zoning ordinance, to follow it. And to grant relief only if you find it's warranted. And so if you find it's warranted, and certainly that's, I'm hearing that direction, that's, and it's fine. Then you, you really are looking at what are the reasons? Cause if you, if you find it's warranted, you already, you already have to have the reasons, you have to know it. And so it's just then writing them down. But if you find you're struggling to actually articulate those reasons, then maybe you look at, at the other direction and see if you can build a, a case that way. Because you really, for almost any variance application, you can build a case for it and you can build a case against it. You've heard very strong arguments, uh, from the applicant tonight. You, although I didn't go over our arguments, they're in our report. And it's, I assume equally strong arguments, uh, saying against it in this case. But that's the case when they have variance, that it's a judgment call. But for you, I would, my suggestion is to really think about what are, what are the reasons why they meet these criteria or don't meet it? And write those reasons down. And I think from there, you may find that you've built a decision out of writing those reasons down.
Could we, um, ask for a motion first and then address each criteria or is that not?
Yeah, uh, you really, ultimately, you want the motion to have the, you can have, I would say this. Although these, the draft motions are structured as one motion, you can have a second motion that gives the reasons. You can have, you can have an action and take action on it. And then have a second motion that gives the reasons. But, but frankly, the reasons are going, are what should drive your decision. So my, my suggestion is talk about the reasons first, the why, and, and kind of make that list and then see where you are.
Okay.
So let me, let me throw this out there and you guys can rephrase it. So for A, the practical difficulties is that already granting a building that's, that's larger than was permitted, allowed them in that aspect to build a business that's going to generate more income that would, their neighbors of a similar place would have been able to build on just the fourteen hundred square feet. While doing this and being able to continue with this business, they're going to need a little bit more room to be able to keep with what we authorized in twenty twenty, something like that.
I mean, I could see, I think the practical difficulty is that, you know, it was allowed to be a business. The business is growing and needs the space. It's already larger than what in theory could be an accessory building, although it is a business. So the, the practical difficulty, as I see it, would be that it was authorized to be a business. And that in its, in and of itself is unique to the fact that it's labeled an accessory building based on here, but it's also unapproved and authorized business. So that to me is the practical difficulty.
I think the, the rule, it was built, the rules came into play, they kind of cornered it in and now they can't go anywhere.
So.
So to me, that sounds like it's unique to them.
A hundred percent.
And I think that's what A is, that it's not applicable to their neighbors, it's unique to them.
Right, if we were just looking at C, I think it'd be a no-brainer, but.
Yeah, they had to start with A.
Let's see, substantial justice.
Did you write that, did we write out A?
I don't know. You're semi-writing these down.
No, I don't got a pen, so.
Maybe, there's different variations, but is that possible, Rodney? Can you help us condense that?
I tell you, I wrote a sentence down. And we'll see, uh, what, if I caught what you described. The practical difficulty is because it was authorized to be a business in two thousand nine by the Plan Commission. And they need the additional cold stories to be able to use the authorized space.
Correct. As the business said it was approved.
As the business that was approved, okay.
Okay. Substantial justice, anybody want to tackle that?
The variance will give substantial relief and justice to the applicant, consistent with justice to other property owners in the same district. I would only say I don't think that this is applicable to other property owners in the same district. So, um, yes, it would give them substantial relief. I don't know how we add in the layer of justice to other property owners in the same district, because I think it is a very unique.
That does apply, correct?
Right.
It would not be consistent with justice to other property owners that anything, would that have anything to do with the property owners, uh, petitioning that they don't do it or they're, or they're against the proposal? Cause you, cause we, we heard one property owner that's, next to them says it's fine, and the rest have never responded, so we're assuming it's.
Well, we, we hold a hearing to hear from the neighbors, to hear from the public in general. The, uh, there, there's not a voting process for, for the public in this. They are, they provide information, they provide, provide opinion and, and direction. But they, they do, they do not provide a vote or even, uh, provide a, something that looks like a vote. Uh, I would not recommend that you base any decision on neighbors or, or.
And I think it just, I think it's just implying that what they have wouldn't be allowed for other property owners in their district. However, I think because they were, their situation is so unique, it wouldn't be anyway. Whether or not we grant the variance, it's not an option for other property owners in the same R2A zoning district.
So if a neighbor came in next year and says, I want to build a two thousand square foot, you know, pole barn for whatever reason, and they cannot do that because it's not allowed, and then they say, well, the Morays were allowed to build this, you know, why were they allowed to do it? And I wasn't, is that what we're falling under in this substantial justice? Or are we just looking at existing structures?
Go ahead. Uh, we have actually had the circumstances since. We had, uh, a, another company that, that, uh, didn't check, check in about zoning, didn't check in about anything. Bought a home with a large agricultural building on it, uh, and began operating their business out of it. And, uh, when we've seen complaints from neighbors in that case, uh, but it was pretty obvious anyway, we drove by. Uh, when, when notified of the violation, they actually cited the Morays' business and said, but they're doing it, why can't we? So the, the, we had to explain to them that the Morays have this home occupation permit and had to explain how that came to be. And they actually, I think it was even some questions about could we do that? And, and the answer to that was, well, again, anybody can apply, but it said, there's not really a means for that.
What we're doing here.
What we did in that circumstance is we worked with them for, uh, seven, eight months, nine months, I don't remember how long it was, a long time. We worked with them, uh, to, to, uh, as they were transitioning to find something else. And we continued to work with them until they were able to find that and move. And they have not only moved, but they've grown and moved since, uh, from that spot. So it, that, that's really the key here is that, that, uh, we simply need to, the, the ordinance has to be followed. The neighbor would be in the same circumstance. If they, if they want to build something that was bigger than the ordinance allowed, the only way to do that would be to seek a variance. But your job is not to grant variances because people ask for them. Your job is to grant variances because you find that it's warranted based on the criteria in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Um, before we went any further, uh, for the people on, uh, in the audience and those that are watching, I don't, I don't know if you're following what we're doing here. There's, there's eight criteria that has to be met. And I have an extra sheet if you guys would like this. If you want to follow through, Tim, I know that you've, you addressed that. You have, you have those there?
Yep. I have a part of it, what was emailed.
Yeah, okay. All right, um.
Hey, Rick, I'm going to have to, um, go. I'm sorry, I've got a child to pick up at eight fifteen, so, um, do I need to pound the gavel or?
So what do we do, where are we at now?
We do have.
Do we still have a quorum?
We, we do have, we have four, but we do have an alternate that has been in the room and has heard everything you've done. You have every ability, if you wish, to invite the alternate to take the seat.
Yeah, and the alternate is?
Franklin McKenzie.
Franklin, would you mind taking a seat at the table?
Sure.
Thank you for coming too. Thank you, Liz.
I'm so sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
I was hoping we would, um, move quickly through it, but I, I should have known, it's been two years.
Do we have a name sign for Franklin?
He's got one.
Oh, you have it?
Yeah.
Okay. I believe we are on, uh, uh, unique circumstances, is that where we are? I think we did, or did we already answer that one? We figured it's very unique.
Yeah, it's definitely unique. Did we get anything written down for B?
Uh, B, substantial justice, did we?
Do we need, we need to have like a sentence for each one of these, correct?
Well, you, you decide your reasons why.
A justification.
If you, yeah, when you get done, if you feel that the reasons why hit on all these criteria, you're good whether you have a sentence for each one or not.
Oh, we don't have to, we can just say they hit everyone.
Just, you just, you decide that they met the criteria.
Okay.
And you just want to make sure your reasons why are, are.
The reason we have the sentence is just in case something down the road comes and we forget what we talked about. It's like, ask me, did our due diligence, here was our reasoning.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have five more of these items to take. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm assuming unique circumstances are pretty self-eccuatory. And then preservation of property rights, anybody have any comments on any of those or?
That one, uh, Mr. Beebe, both his letter and his comments address that. So you, you could simply, if you wished, cite his letter of October sixth as satisfying.
By citing the, his, his comments in his letter?
Yeah, you could just cite the letter and that, that, if you agree with his, his comments.
Okay.
Then you could cite the letters as, as, as showing the unique circumstances and showing the need for preservation of property rights.
Yeah, you have the letters, everybody.
So regarding the unique circumstances, uh, according to the ordinance, the need for, so under unique circumstances, the requirement there is that the need for the variance is due to unique circumstances peculiar to the land or structures involved. And, uh, I think it's worth discussing a little bit. Certainly the fact that they have a business here and they've gone through all the rigmarole of, of rezoning and everything. That seems unique, but is the structure or the land unique necessarily?
The situation is unique.
The situation is unique, definitely. But the, the land or the structure needs to be unique.
Was the unique circumstance, not unique land.
Unique circumstances peculiar to the land or structures.
What would a, the structure be, unique since it was granted a size larger than the previous, or then allowed by a previous group? And that's what makes it unique?
Yeah, I think.
And the home occupation approval, right?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say that's something maybe we should think about is, yeah, like what, you know, specifically, you know, what about the structure needs to be peculiar? Is it, uh, the actual architecture or the size, or is it the circumstances surrounding why it was built? Is it, uh, the actual architecture or the size, or is it the circumstances surrounding why it was built?
The circumstance, why is it still okay, because it was done so long ago and equate the time, and then rules changed, so.
Yeah, I don't think it's the architecture, I think it's the square footage relative to what would be normally allowed in today's, you know, if somebody were to start from the ground up.
One thing to keep in mind is that there are many structures in the township that are legal non-conforming structures because they are, are too large. We have, uh, we're an agricultural community, that was how we started, uh, and we have many farm structures, older barns, um, that are no longer used for agriculture, often the farmers don't want those older barns anymore, and they divide off that, that, that lot, uh, with those barns and the farmhouse separately. And so you end up with, often with a house, uh, in the more rural areas, and this is a rural area, uh, that, uh, where, where we have outbuildings that, that had original purpose, that, that not used for that anymore, that are larger than what the ordinance allows. Absolutely, they can be used. Go ahead, park your car in there, you, you, park your RV in there, whatever you're going to use it for, uh, is consistent with the zoning ordinance, it's fine. Uh, even though it's larger as a legal non-conforming structure. If it were to be destroyed, there might be a challenge with rebuilding, we have to rebuild it as it currently allows. But, but it, it, simply because a building exists, it might be larger than the ordinance allows, does not make it unique. Actually, there are many, many in township, and many in most communities.
So I think. That's what I thought it was, I thought that was what we were, sorry about that, that's what I was going with.
But the use of the building, isn't that unique? In that area, I mean, there's not a bunch of home occupation businesses operating in seventeen hundred twenty square foot accessory buildings, is there?
We winnowed it down to that specificity, that would probably be true.
Well, I was being a little ridiculous, but I think you get my point.
Anybody else have any other questions on some of these preservation of property rights, um, public safety, welfare? I mean, I think the public safety would, it doesn't hinder any of that, if there was a destruction or a fire, I think that this building, being this lean to, would not add any additional firefighting, preservation things that would affect the property there and nearby housing, I don't think so.
Going back to D, though, I'm kind of stuck on that one, how do we justify that enlarging this building is necessary for the preservation enjoyment of other property owners? And that's where we referenced Mr. Beebe's letter.
Letter of October?
October sixth.
I think, uh, you know, each, I would like to bring up that each case is unique, but, uh, Rodney did mention it earlier that there was another case where, uh, you know, an entity came into a property and started operating their business out of it, and, um, were, were they ultimately, did they have to figure out something else to do, or?
Yeah, it was an ordinance violation case, uh, they were, uh, issued a notice of violation. Uh, they, I don't believe they were ever issued any tickets, uh, civil infraction citation for it, because they did agree that they would relocate, and they simply asked for time. And our ordinance gives the zoning administrator the ability to, uh, work with them over a period of time, to bring the property back into compliance. And so that's what was done, we simply worked with them, had, they checked in with us every once in a while to let us know what they were doing, uh, so we were seeing progress, and, and as I said, I don't, I, I don't know, Peter, do you recall how long that went on? I think it was nine months, six, seven, nine months, something like that?
Yeah, it was, it was within a year.
Okay, so it went on a long time, uh, but we worked with them until they were able to make, uh, to find a location. They moved into that location, which was larger than what they had in the, in that pole barn building. And then, as I said, a few years later, they actually moved into yet a larger building elsewhere. So, uh, they, they were growing into spaces, uh, through that process.
So I think for D, what we need to figure out is what would be the rights enjoyed by other people that granting this variance would give to the applicants?
Right, because what I'm reading in Mr. Beebe's letter is not anything about other people, it's about the owner's right to preservation of property rights. It's not about, and in the ordinance, it states that we're supposed to be considering the enjoyment and substantial property right possessed by other property owners in the same zoning district, not the owners, correct, or am I incorrect?
The, you, you are correct, one thing to keep in mind with the typically things that come before you with the variance, there is an issue, uh, that is preventing somebody from doing something they want to do. And the question for you is, is that something that they're being prevented from doing, something that the neighbors can do? That, that's the idea of, of preserving a property right that's available to a neighbor, that in this case, uh, the Maury family is unable to do because of the, the ordinance requirement that applies, it's applying here. So it, certainly, the, uh, every, every landowner has a, a whole collection of property rights. And the business owner has some rights related to their, that ownership of that property of their business. Uh, but the, the, the key with the variance is you are granting relief that allows that person to have the same, same ability to use their property than another owner would. The, the typical example is, is a setback variance. I know we're not dealing with that in this case, but it might be illustrative a little bit. In that, that, uh, because maybe, uh, the lot is very narrow, or the lot has an odd configuration, if, if they had to meet the, let's say, fifty foot setback from the property line, they could not build a building on that, on that odd shaped or skinny lot. But they could build the, the same building their neighbor could build if they were granted a variance at down to twenty foot setback. So that's, that's where they are, in granting that setback relief, uh, the zoning board of appeals would be allowing this owner to be able to build the same kind of building their neighbor could build. This case, it said they've already built that building, uh, based in the R two A zoning district. If it was zoned somebody else, uh, one thing to keep in mind, this property's not been rezoned. This property is zoned what it is, it's been zoned this way for a long time. But if it were to be rezoned, they could build something more, because the, the other zoning districts, Ag or R one, do allow a larger building. That's simply the case, depending on which zoning district you're in, there's different standards. The, uh, the more urban residential district has tighter standards for accessory structures. The rural districts, Ag and R one, allow more, uh, space for, for these buildings.
Uh, may I go back to, I would, I think it is C, unique circumstances, is that okay to discuss that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, one, one of the kind of unique hardships that was discussed was that, you know, regarding rezoning, because right now it's, um, right now it's R two A, and so that, you know, for an accessory building, it's only to twenty-four hundred square feet. And so it was brought up, you know, rezoned to AG or R one. Is it possible to, or, you know, practical for a person to rezone certain parcels and not, um, for example, the area where they want to build those duplexes, is that a possibility?
Go ahead.
So, um, it, it is possible for somebody to propose a rezoning that, that doesn't include the entire parcel boundaries. We don't recommend it, it's, when you split zone a property, it gets, it gets awkward. But the, the applicant has the ability, if they, if they satisfy the, the, uh, the requirements, either the line division act requirements, uh, which allow for a certain number of divisions, uh, of land, uh, or if they could come in and, and propose subdivision plat, or is that kind of medium development, there are ways that they could create those additional lots. And so what, what, uh, if they, if they would like to create those additional lots, it'd be best to simply create them, uh, whichever process, or, as I said, the state law allows several different ways they could create them. Uh, and then rezone the remainder of the property. Uh, but, but yes, the applicant could, uh, come in with an application that simply left out an area of sufficient size for the land, the lots that they would like to create.
And the reason I, uh, bring that up is, so, right, right now it's zoned R two A, and so the, that's actually, the limit for an accessory is fifteen hundred fifty?
Fifteen, yep.
Square feet.
But if they rezoned to, you know, AG or R one, then it would be twenty-four hundred, and then we'd only be granting a variance for forty-two feet or something like that. So, maybe it would be practical to, you know, propose that it be rezoned, which is not, you know, our, our jurisdiction, but if they rezone to our, uh, AG or R one, then that, you know, their accessory structure will be allowed to be twenty-four hundred feet, or rather, because it's a non-conforming use, they'll have to build a separate building, and that'll add up to twenty-four hundred square feet, but at that point, you know, if it is rezoned, and then we hypothetically gave that variance, you know, maybe they could just, you know, split off more parcels if they did want to build more duplexes, like they did, I think, originally split up, you know, parcels between the original house and the, uh, shop. So, basically what I'm seeing is I'm viewing these, in my mind, if they rezone to AG, R one, or R one, and are allowed to build up to twenty-four hundred square feet, then, you know, are we fulfilling these, um, these standards? And the reason I bring that up is I think we can give a conditional variance, and I think maybe the condition is it's rezoned to R one or AG, so then it is allowed that twenty-four hundred square feet, and then we're only given a variance for.
I don't know if you can do a conditional variance, I think a variance is, what, patchwork. I, I'm, I'm not, yeah, I'm not quite following you exactly, I think, if I'm not mistaken, what the applicants are applying for, they're, they're actually applying for a variance. Yeah. And I think the intention is not to rezone the property, uh, Ag or whatever it would be, I think that was the intention. And I hope we, we can focus on that, doesn't mean it could be approved that way, but I mean, the intent is to, uh, to address the variance with these conditions.
Yeah, I think that gets a little messy, but I think we do have the option to add conditions, to approve with conditions, which we've done several times in the planning commission, is that what, yeah?
That, that's what I was getting at.
But I don't know that we could make rezoning one of those conditions.
Yeah, because that's a legislative action.
And it'd have to happen through a different, yeah.
So, what I would suggest is if, if you're looking, if you're looking at rezoning as the appropriate action to take here, um, then the appropriate action for you is to reject the variance. They can always apply again, that, this does not prevent them from applying in the future for other variants. Uh, but frankly, that their building is only forty-eight square feet higher than that twenty-four hundred maximum, that's nothing. That's adjusting in a little bit, and the forty-eight square feet is no longer an issue, and they can simply build a building with a, a, a building permit. Um, and, uh, so if, if you're, if you're finding that rezoning is the proper action, then, then your, your response is to simply deny the variance. You, you don't need to get into all these other elements, uh, because they, that's up to them to decide what their action is to take next. What I will say, though, is if you, if you go down the road of denying the variance, the same, uh, advice applies that you want to state why. Uh, and, uh, so that it's in the record as to why you're denying the variance.
You know, it's kind of, but I know where, where the possibilities of this goes. It just extends this process further and further and further. These people applied around the first of July, it's already November, and now we're talking about something that could even delay any further. And I, personally, I, I think it's offensive, as a, as a member of the township, that we put, that put people through it like that. Unfortunately, a lot of it has to require engineering and, and getting a form together, I know that's all part of it.
They did not apply in July for this variance application.
Not at all, okay.
No, they applied recently for the zoning.
No, there's one, but I think the application for the permit was in July. So I'm looking at it as a practical person.
There was, there were, there were discussions with the applicant back, back in July.
Okay.
They've been looking at, at, at this for a while, the, but the, the variance application is recent.
Okay.
This is not, nothing's been delayed.
Okay, all right, yeah, and so I'm concerned about timing, what it takes to get something done in our township, so, and that's my concern.
So the appropriate action for rezoning, simply we have to follow the state zoning act, just as we do with this. This required time to, to publish the notices for the hearing before we had to have.
Then it has to go to the planning commission.
So, but a rezoning action simply takes steps to do, in this case, it happens that the rezoning of that, that land, whether it's all or part, uh, would be actually consistent with the master plan. That's actually the important element, because that's a very strong argument, argument in favor of the rezoning as the appropriate response. But the, the, your reasons for granting a variance, if you notice, none of these criteria have anything to do with time.
I understand.
So you want to make sure that you keep your, the scope of what you look at, because you want to have a legally defensible decision. You keep, uh, keep tight to the criteria, either pro, pro archon, whichever way you decide to go.
Where are we now?
E.
Public safety and welfare.
Yep.
Requested variance be granted such a fashion that the spirit of this order will be observed, public safety and self-welfare secured.
Yeah, I don't think there's any danger in it.
I don't think so either. Uh, F, not self-created, the problem is only need to be variance, has not been self-created by the applicant. I don't think the applicant, I think the applicant, I'm sorry.
They, they, but we, we don't start a business in a new township, so they put their blood, sweat into it and, and build it, and then, like I said, the rules change around them, and they're like, okay, we're still here doing business, so it's not self-created.
The, the rules did not change around them.
Well, I mean, the ordinance has changed.
They, they started a business without permits, without checking, uh, after the fact, they were given notice that they were in violation of our ordinance, the property has never been zoned commercial, uh, and then it, it, there was an effort made to find a means to resolve it, which was done through the home occupation permit. But the rules didn't change. We have an ordinance that's been updated since then.
Right.
Uh, that, that clarified the home occupation rules a bit.
Okay.
But, uh, the, the rules didn't change around them, they, they, they started a business without any permits.
I missed that, okay, thank you.
So, would somebody say that we're giving special treatment to them, since back then, they built without a permit? Woody worked with them, got them through, and then now they're expanding again in twenty twenty-five? Oh, they got another variance, it's like.
You know, if I may, that's worth.
Is that?
Yeah, actually, actually, that's.
Or no, does that not make sense?
We work very hard to help people be successful as, wherever we can. We help them to understand the ordinance, we help them to understand what the rules are, we help them to find ways to work within those rules, to, to go where they would like to go. So, the, what Woody, uh, the zoning administrator did back in, in two thousand eight and two thousand nine, what the planning commission did in granting the home occupation permit, all those steps actually were, were taken with the goal of trying to help, uh, a, a property owner and a business owner be successful. And we continue to do that today. Uh, I, I respect Mr. Beebe's comments, but, uh, I will say that we, we do that today, every single day, so there's nothing unique about that.
I just don't want us to be sympathizers to just a single entity, I think we want to be proactive, pro-business, okay?
Rick, we have a public comment.
We have a comment?
So, so it's up to you, you are at this point, Rick, if I may, you are, you are in the deliberation section? So this is really not, normally it would not be a public comment, having said that, you have every ability to choose.
The only thing, the only reason I would probably ask, uh, Mr. Beebe to step up, is if it's clarification, and then would you step in the podium, please?
I just wanted to clarify on your point, when you said, things have changed. Rodney, what was the maximum square footage of the accessory structure prior to this new ordinance language?
I don't have that document with me.
I don't think there was. It was not fifteen hundred square feet, so yes, the rules have changed, and they have changed around them, you are absolutely correct. And I appreciate how bad that you noticed, though.
Thank you, all right. Back deliberation, any, any more comments on any of these more than inconvenience, minimum necessary action? Any more comments?
No.
All right, seeing no more comments, I'll like to entertain a motion.
I move to approve the, a variance.
Okay, do we read the, uh, motion?
Where is it? Oh, sorry.
Page, page eighteen and, and nineteen have some templates, you can use them or not, but they're there really to help, help, uh, ensure our, we have complete minutes.
Let's do that.
And they give you some format to work with.
Thank you. I move to approve the PVAR twenty-five oh one request from Ron and Denise Maury for nine hundred forty-eight. for a 948 square foot variance to exceed the maximum 1,500 square foot floor area allowed per section 7.5.7.3 of the zoning ordinance for accessory building in the R2A 1 and 2 family low-density residential zoning district on approximately 7.79 acres of land north of East River Road, PID 140033000125 in the southwest quarter of section 3, finding that the variance is consistent with the standards for review in section 14.4.4K.1 of the zoning ordinance for the following reasons. And we have to list those.
Do we have a support? Do we have a support for a motion?
So, we have, but, we have, there are no reasons.
Oh, the rea, you want to list the reasons first before we have asked for support?
Well, again, that's up to you, how you, what to do it. I, I, I can read the one, again, so it's in the record, I can read the one reason that I, that, that you, you asked me to read, to read out. That's, that's certainly one.
Okay.
That, that reason was just shared again. There are practical difficulties because, uh, because, uh, the, the site was authorized to, uh, I'm sorry, buil, building was authorized to be a business in 2009 by the planning commission through a home occupation permit. And they, and they, the applicant, needs the additional cold storage to be able to use the authorized space as, as the business that was authorized.
Tara, you'll be able to?
I'm gonna grab that from the...
Okay. Okay. Other items? Item B, substantial justice? Any comments for substantial justice? Or do we?
No.
Is there a second?
Huh?
Was there a second?
No, that's just why we're kind of stuck in between here. I, I'd like to see a mo, support to the motion so we can discuss it if that's possible.
Then you would need to amend the motion to add the, the reasons.
Then I'll, okay, then I want to amend the motion. So, we have a motion at this point, and we're just got to list out the items to get it, in order for us to get a, a support. Okay, sorry about that. Okay. Uh, substantial justice, the variance will get substantial relief and justice to the applicant consistent with justice to other property owners in the same district. I think we discussed that as reasonable? Unique circumstances, a need for variance is due to unique circumstances peculiar to the land or structure involved that are not applicable to other land or structures in the same district.
It's definitely a unique situation.
Pardon?
It's definitely a unique circum, circumstance.
And I would write that.
What is the unique circumstance? That's the question.
Now, Mr. Beebe had a comment, should a once-conforming structure be used to be classified as non-conform use after, thus since, since the zoning was changed?
Can you repeat that?
I don't know. I said, I, I says, should a once-conforming structure used to be classified as a non-conforming use, thus restrict the business. Then I think it had to do with, I think the comment was that the zoning was changed after the person had that.
That, that is also not unique to zoning ordinances updated regularly in many communities. Setbacks change, height requirements change, broad con. This section that we're talking about was amended in 2020, or added in 2020 as it is, was amended later.
I think we look at it overall when we're going through this whole concept of how the change, it all seems unique to us. You know, it's like the whole, the whole thing is a unique circumstance.
Well, I...
Because of all the variants, variations, not variants.
So, my suggestion, if, uh, if the, uh, you see there in C, the comment from staff, the need for the variance is due to a home occupation permit for the sign shop. If you feel that's the unique circumstance, then I would simply cite that.
Okay.
Okay, and then...
You really could just, that first sentence could be what you put in there, if you wish.
Maybe you can help us with something like that. Now, preservation of property rights?
Well, I'll, uh, let, you know, if we want to adopt, um, the reason given in, in the report for that, I think that's good. I, I personally don't, I, I think we're maybe failing a little bit on, on item D, because I don't think that this is, uh, right enjoyed by other property owners in the same zoning district. I think if we gave this variance, you know, I'm, I'm very much in support of, you know, of supporting small businesses, but, you know, this is, this is a boon that we're giving to this particular small business that we can't give right now to other businesses, because they're not here asking for that same variance.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to agree that I do not want this to take longer. I don't even want to be here longer, and you know, that's kind of the consensus from people when they're trying to get something approved, is that we're trying to drag our feet and make this process, you know, painful and difficult for small businesses, and that's not my intent at all. I'd love to see this building, I'd love to see the business grow, I'd love to see all that success, but when we're put in a box of having to check certain markers, and we have that as our responsibility, that's up to us to be able to do that. So, us going through this sloppily and just saying, well, we're gonna take that one, and we're just, and we're not coming up with the reasons, we're not defending these standards for review, so that to me feels sloppy, and it feels like we're failing.
You know, you're certainly struggling to find it, define how we feel. We feel that this is something that needs, uh, that needs approval. And then, and I think what you're, what you're saying, we're struggling to, to come up with a specific reason other than this.
Which is what gives me pause, because if we're struggling to come up with the reasons, and we can't just make a motion to approve it because we want it to move faster for the applicants. I love that, I love that they could get this done, I want that to happen. I in no way want to see this business fail, or the family, or for them to have to take further measures. But when we have parameters that we have to stick to because we're officials in this, you know, we've been given this job, we have to follow through with that. We can't just say we want this to happen, so let's just do it. That's not meeting the standards for review.
But I've said, I've said earlier, I'll say again, that if you're finding you're struggling to make it work with the variance you're, with the, the motion that you're thinking about, then it might be worth trying the opposite one and see where that goes. Because you, if you find that one actually comes together, uh, then, then that, that may be the motion that, that moves forward. But, uh, anyway, if you're struggling to find reasons, that, that's about reason to look a different direction. And keeping in mind, they have the alternative of the rezoning. That's one of the reasons to not grant a variance, is they preserve a rezoning where they can do it, deal with this, and, and get a building that, that's within 48 square feet of what they're seeking. Frankly, they actually, they can actually get larger, because they can build it, as I said, a second building in the Ag District. They can have two buildings, R or the R1. So, they can build a brand-new 2,400 square foot building on the same lot, and, and then have this one simply continue to be the business. So, they can get what they need through the rezoning process.
Yeah, that's my concern, and you, you did bring up a very good point, Rick, that this, these things drag on, and it's very, very tedious. I completely agree. But, you know, you know, going from a, from, the building is currently 1,700. That's in excess of the 1,500 limit currently. And then to go all the way up to past 2,400, that, you know, that's quite a distinct favor that I think is, is on, you know, that's shown a preference maybe over other people who still have to, have to stick to the 1,500. Now, so, that's, yeah, I think we're kind of failing on point D, but, you know, if...
Point C?
Point, point D, point D.
Okay.
Uh, but, you know, if it were rezoned and the limit were 2,400 square feet, then I don't think we would be giving a, you know, a, an advantage, but that's a different issue. That's not what we're talking about right now.
You can't be talking about that. You almost need an A team and a B team. An A team that writes down the pros, a B team that writes down the negatives. They come together, one team is like, we struggle, the other team is, here's what we got. That's almost what you need right here, and advocate, and the devil's advocate, to be able to write down the reasons and see which one is easier.
I mean, the only other option is just to follow through with the motion and have a vote, and just take what comes with the vote, but I, I think that's, you know, kind of failing these standards.
Yeah, we, we need every single one of these.
But we also can't stay here and argue about it for everyone, but...
Right. Every single one of these needs to be met, and we need to give reasons, because, I mean, it can, it can be appealed, and maybe we'll be called as witnesses in, in court, and we'll have to explain, I thought it because of this. And I think, yeah, if we don't have reasons for some of them, I think that means that those are unfortunately, that those criteria are not fulfilled, and if even one is not fulfilled, we can't, we're not supposed to grant the variance.
I thought we had gone through, I had thought we had gone through each of them, but...
Oh, yeah, if, I, I think we're just kind of struggling to write down our, our reasons a little bit.
Everything that we brought up that we couldn't come to our own words for, we just referred to Beebe's letter. Is that meeting the standards for review? I guess that's a question we need to ask.
I think he, he brings up his perspective and his, uh, and their, their, their reasoning. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that, because I think he's, that's what they're, that's, that's their opinion, that's what they're, that's what they're feeling.
So, if we're gonna use those words, or refer, you know, referring to those words as our reasons for standing, you know, meeting these standards for review, we need to make sure we stand by those. If, you know, what he's, we have to make sure that we think the preservation of property rights is met because of what he said. Unless we're gonna write or come up with our own reasoning, we have to make sure we agree with that.
May I motion to amend the motion? Just, I, I think this will speed it up, because it'll give us a structure. Can we go back through each point and just make sure we have something written down? This is our reason, and then once we get through all of them, then vote on the variance?
Just like a, a phrase, or? Well, I mean, you said we don't have to have a sentence or 20 sentences, we just have to be able to stand behind it.
Yeah, but, you know, if we stand behind it, we should be able to write it down.
Sure.
Yes.
So, right, right now you have a motion that never got a second.
That's right.
You could, you could acknowledge as chair that that motion failed because it didn't get a second.
Okay, that's true.
That would allow that to be a done.
Okay.
If you wanted to do that.
No, that's fine, that's what I think we'd have to do, because we're, we're not getting anywhere with that. So, so now I, so now do I, do I allow amendment to the motion? Or do we just do a full, or do we, do we just say the motion has not failed for lack of support?
That's all you need to say.
Go.
And so then you're back to deliberations.
Okay.
And so if you want to do these lists, you can just make the list, and then, and then use that, then, for, that list for a new motion.
Can someone keep track of these? Do we know what the first one, Rodney had a word wording for it? And I think Tara's gonna get that for us. Okay, let's do a quick, let's go as fast as we can, as far as...
Do we already have A?
A's done, and B, substantial justice?
Um, I would say that, that, uh, you, we have C also, the first sentence on, of our report under C, the need for the variance is due to a home occupation for a sign shop that the township approved.
Okay.
Okay, so...
That, that's, uh, that's an item, it's under two.
Okay.
So, we need some paperwork here?
Frank, are you writing this down?
Yes, I'm...
I think we struggled with B.
We struggled with B and D specifically.
Pardon?
I think we struggled with B and D specifically.
B and D, substantial justice. And the, Mr. Beebe said, "In concisen, without relief granted by the zoning board of the local small business will find itself a situation not of their own making."
Which is only addressing...
That.
The applicant's substantial justice, not other property owners in the same district. And that's what I have a problem with on D as well.
Yeah, B and D, those two are related, because they both relate to, both to the property and to the neighbor.
Consistent with justice to other property owners.
Which I 100% see how it's not, you know, it's creating a problem for them. I get that, and I don't want that to be a problem. But the wording of this says that we have to take in consideration the other property owners.
If another property owner came forward, would we just easily be able to grant him citing what we did today?
And if not, what would we say? Or if we did, what would we, I mean, it has to be, we have to create some equality, you know, we can't... Everything unfortunately can't be case by case, because we'd be sitting here every hour of every day making decisions on everything. That's why there's ordinances and laws and decisions that cover larger than one circumstance at a time.
And it's not, this is not referring to, to a neighbor's variance. This is referring to the neighbor being able to do what the ordinance allows.
Yes.
So...
Yeah, being able to build and do the same thing, per the ordinance, yes. But a neighbor will be able to do the same thing.
Yeah, in, my, my perspective would be, you know, an example where we need to grant a variance in order, you know, to grant them justice consistent, consistent with other residents would be, you know, a resident, you know, resident A has a flat property, and it's easy to build a 2,400 square foot, uh, structure. Resident B has a hill, and they can't build on the hill, they have to build down near the road, but, you know, they have, there's a setback, they can't. And so they need a variance to get around that setback, so that they can then build the same-sized building as someone else. It just happens that they need to be doing that, uh, in a specific area that they need a, a variance for. That's my interpretation of what, you know, granting substantial justice consistent with other, you know, people in the district would be.
So, reading B on page four, the second sentence that the administrative staff came up with states that the applicant is gonna get substantial relief and justice, because they're going to be able to do what they're looking to do to build their business. But it does not allow for other property owners, because they would not be able to build a building more than 60% larger unless they also, I mean, now, this is my own words, unless they also apply for variance. So, how do we bend that into it being justified for the other property owners? If another property owner was in here right now and said, well, I want to build a 2,400 square foot pole barn right now, also, tomorrow, right there, can I, we would say, no, you've got to come up with reasons for variance, correct?
Well, they, actually, if somebody else came in today and applied for a building permit for that 2,400 square foot building, they would be rejected, the permit application would be rejected. Again, this doesn't have anything to do with people coming in and getting variances. Each case, you're, this is about relief being granted where it's warranted.
And consistent, and consistent with justice to other property owners. Wouldn't we think relief would be warranted?
Well, one thing to keep in mind is, as I said, this ordinance was adopted by our board of trustees. It is a legislative action, it is not your role, and in fact, it is a violation of state law for you to rewrite the ordinance. You are simply looking at, is, is relief warranted in this case, consistent with these criteria? It's not, not, if, if, yeah, the applicant can seek to change the ordinance if they wish, they could certainly, in this case, the better solution, they can simply seek to rezone the land to the district where they can build the larger building. But it's not, it's not your job to rewrite the ordinance, that is the legislative action of the board of trustees.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna say, the only big problem I have is the wording that we have to take into, into, we have to make reasoning for why it's providing justice and preserving the rights and enjoyment of all the property owners. That's where the big sticking point is for me. If someone can tell me how that's not the case, I'd love to hear it, and then we could all move on. But that's where I'm stuck. How is this making something the same or better or whatever for other property owners? It's only making, and maybe I'm wrong, so tell me how I'm wrong. In my opinion, the only people benefiting from this are the property owners, and obviously the community, because we want small businesses to thrive and expand. But it specifically says the other property owners.
Right, yeah, it, it would be consistent with justice to other property... Right, yeah, it, it would be consistent with justice to other property owners if every single other property owner who lived in R2A and, you know, up to 9.9 acres or whatever it is, if every single one of them said, I want to build beyond 1,500 square feet up to 2,400 and they all came in and applied for variances and we granted every single one, that would be consistent justice, but then we're completely.
But that's just rewriting an ordinance.
That's an extreme hypothetical, but that's, that's just to, again, emphasize that I'm not, I, I think we're giving ex, we would be giving extra justice that would be, not be consistent with, with what other property owners are having to deal with.
And when Mr. Bibi was speaking, it gave me concern as well. I, I feel like he has a bigger problem with the ordinance than he does. I think the bigger problem is the wording of and the ordinance that's been in place before probably any of us were sitting here. So I'm, you know, we have a decision to make and we have to do it based on those words. But I think the biggest problem is for them are the words.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I, I want to grant this variance, but
Agreed.
if, if it fails any one of these, I'm, in my mind, I'm not allowed to.
Like I'm trying to find a way to do this. Like someone tell me how to do this.
Yeah, the justice, yeah, what they wrote was, "Without relief, a small local business will find itself in a situation not of its own making, which nullifies their ability to grow." It's not really addressing the second phrase, "Consistent with justice to other property owners." I am trying to come up with that sentence. Maybe I am. The best I can come up with is that they built this at a time where it sounds like there wasn't an ordinance and they built something.
There was, from what Rodney said, I guess.
Or what Rodney said or what Bibi said.
The structure was, was lawfully constructed. The business, the property was never zoned commercial. The business was established there. Uh, Mr. Bibi's letter says that the township approved it. We find no record of that ever. The township, uh, I'm sure granted a permit or somebody granted a permit for the building, whether it was township or otherwise, but, but the business was established there without any consideration of the zoning of the property. Uh, and after the fact, the township, uh, zoning administrator and planning commission worked with the owners to come up with a solution that allowed them to be able to remain there and continue to, to operate, which they're doing under the home occupation permit issued in November of 2009. Uh, so.
So if all that's true, and this is a second circumstance where people are sitting around in a circle trying to come up with a reason to keep things going in the direction they want them to go in without following the exact letter of the ordinance.
So if you're, again, if you're struggling to find, it's not your job to make up reasons for this. If, what, if you're struggling, it means really that the applicant has failed to give you reasons that, that actually meet these criteria. My suggestion would be to look the other direction. Turn it around and, and try the other direction. Keeping in mind, one of the reasons to go the other direction is the applicant does have a completely viable other option, which is the rezoning application. They were recommended to pursue it. They chose not to.
And they can also ask for a variance in the future.
Absolutely. They can come back anytime. Absolutely.
Here's what we need to address in the future.
Yep.
That's another thing, right?
Yep.
Okay, so I suggest we discuss what the reasoning is for not pursuing the rezoning. Do we have a very specific and clear reasoning from the owners to not, because I, like, why, what's the big reason not to do that? Time?
Can you, uh, what do you mean?
So like, they don't want to pursue the rezoning. They want to pursue the variance. Why? Is the only reason because it's going to take more time? That's my question.
I think my understanding is they don't want to go through the rezoning because it changes the whole structure of their future development of whatever else they want to do.
If they want to do more duplexes, if they want to build a residence, correct?
Yeah.
That's a, that is an interesting question. There's not been any discussion about whether there's sewer capacity, whether the sewer can be extended further. All those are things that are not part of the conversation here.
Right. All they want to do is build a lean-to, put their vehicles in, right?
Yeah, this, I mean, this puts us in a really impossible position because I don't.
Actually, what they, what they said was that they wanted to build the lean-to, to, to, for cold storage for some of the things that are in this building. So they have more space to fully utilize the interior building space for the business.
And a lean-to is a three-sided building.
Right.
And I don't really care what they use for. I mean, maybe I should care more, but I, my point is, I, it doesn't matter to me if my neighbor wanted to build a lean-to. But as a commissioner, we have to follow these rules. I don't care if they put hay in it. I don't, like, whatever. And I don't think it's going to be that big of a deal for the neighbors. But we have these rules for a reason and we can't just break them or gloss over them because we don't care if they build a lean-to. That's where my problem is and it's, it's a struggle because I don't, like I said, I don't want to sit here any further. I don't want to drag them into this any further. Someone come up with a way that we could do this and I'm all for it, but it doesn't look like we can with these standards.
Because they have to pass all the standards. We just have to find one to nullify it. They have written right here, "This would not be consistent with justice to other property owners," in part B, sentence one. And that's always written.
But keep, yeah, I would say, as I said earlier, you have substantial authority here. The, the ordinance, the, the ordinance that's written says that all eight criteria apply. You decide how, how they apply. You decide the reasons why they, they apply. So you can come up with reasons, as I said. Find a reason and move forward. But the, the, a core element of the variance and a core element of your task is to look at this issue of justice, both for the property owner, providing relief if relief is warranted, uh, and for the neighboring properties. And so the, the B and D, this is actually at the core of why, why you exist, is actually to weigh these things and to look at both sides. Essentially, your role is part of the public trust, you know, that, that, you know, that, that the township has, has a responsibility over or stewardship over. And, and you are ensuring, you know, the justice to all parties that are involved, including those parties that are not in this room. You know, neighbors that didn't come to the meeting. So it, it's tough and, you know, these cases that come before you are not, generally, they're not easy. Uh, this one is tough. And I, you know, uh, as I said, there is another option. You know, if, I will say that if you're looking for reasons to say no, our staff report provides those. Because that's the direction that we found as we looked at this. We had a hard time finding reasons for ourselves that were consistent.
I could think of that would put us in a better place would be in D. And I don't know, I mean, it seems pretty shaky to me, but we could say something along the lines of, all the other property owners in the same district have the exact same rights as they do to request a variance or request rezoning in the future if they feel the need to.
That's a case for any, anybody. That's not a, that's not a unique reason.
So it doesn't seem to me like, that's the only way I can find it to be the same.
To me, B and D almost are the same, is that, you know, businesslike themselves are bottled in. They need to expand. Without doing this, without the, the substantial preservation of properties, whatever, they both seem to me that, that, that they don't, that if they don't have this relief, that they can't expand their business. Right now, they're out of space. And it's, and it's, to me, it's a detriment to.
But that has nothing to do with the building, nothing to do with the variance, because they can expand this building. The problem is that it was never zoned commercial. And, and they were granted relief, essentially the home occupation, where they granted it after the fact for that specific spot. They can, as, as I shared with that other example, very similar business. They moved to a new location, which was larger. They then moved to another new location that, that's larger yet. That second, the first location was in the city of Mount Pleasant. The second location's in Union Township. So that, that's how you expand a business is you simply are in an area that's property is zoned for it. We have many properties available for, for this kind of business. Commercial, there's plenty of commercial zoning and plenty of, of space available where this business could locate.
Right, I get all that, but I mean, that might give us no place of trying to decide if, you know, who has, we don't know what their financial circumstances are, if they can, you know, turn around tomorrow and buy a different property and I don't really feel like getting into any of that. As far as, what I do want to say is no one told them they had to buy this property and put their business on this property when they were probably pretty aware of what it was zoned for.
Yeah, I, I feel like right now what we've got in the report, you know, mentions giving relief to the applicants, which we all want to do, but it doesn't mention how that would be consistent with justice to other property owners. And I don't think we've really been able to come up with how it would be consistent with justice to other property owners. So I'm inclined to say that, yeah, this fails at least point B and because of that, we can't grant the variance.
I think at this point, I think we're almost, where we can't come to consensus, we can't come up with a logical reasons that, rather than run or ask for it to be rezoned, which I don't think they want. The only thing we have to do is get a motion denied. That's the only thing we can do right now. And I, then we have time, we gotta go back to draw, they gotta go back to drawing board or whatever, but, uh, make some decisions, but, uh, right now we're struggling to come up to beat all these eight different items that have to be met.
Right. We're going on close to two hours.
It doesn't mean they can't reapply again. Does that possibly, with, with some help?
Again, they, they certainly have the option to apply for variance in the future if they, if they find they have a need for, for that.
Okay, okay.
Well, then I'm going to, uh, go forward the motion to deny PV AR 25-01, request from Ron and Denise Mori for a 948 square foot variance to exceed the maximum 1,500 square foot floor area allowed per section 7.5 point C point three of the zoning ordinance for an accessory building in the R-2A, one and two family low density residential zoning district on approximately 7.79 acres of land north of East River Road, PID 14-003-30-001-25 in the southwest quarter of section three, finding that the variance is not consistent with the standards for review in section 14 dot four dot K dot one of the zoning ordinance for the following reasons. That we were unable to meet.
Section 14.4 K1 of the standard.
Standards of review, for review at this time.
So did you want to cite the specific, I think you cited two.
Specifically B and D, right?
At this point, B and D.
That they, that the applicant did not satisfy those.
Yeah, but I guess, yeah, I was saying it the opposite, but I see what you're saying. Yeah. Applicants unable to meet the standards for section 14.4 point K, point one, specifically section B and D.
We have motion with explanation, uh, detail explanation of, of the motion denied. Do we have a support? Do we have?
I'll support.
Support. Hey Franklin? Do we have any further discussion? Albows in favor of the motion denied.
Mike, we'll do it. We should do a roll call.
A roll call vote?
Yeah, I can, I can call it.
Okay.
All right. Uh, Bars?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
McKenzie?
Aye.
McDonald?
Aye.
Rogers?
Aye.
Take just a five-minute break for just two minutes.
Oh, good idea.
Oh, good idea.
Item would be on the PV AR 2502 applicant request 25 foot setback variance from section 3.7 R1 rural residential. Rear set, rear, rear yard setback requirements for principal building located at 4355 South Lincoln Road and approximate 6.06 acre parcel zone R1 rural residential district located in the northwest one quarter of section 28. At this point, I'll ask for updates from the staff.
Thank you. You have our, our report dated October the 30th. This, as was said, it's a request from, from Sacred Heart Parish for variance. What is proposed, the, the site plan that's attached to your application is the, a new, basically indoor batting facility. The Sacred Heart Parish has used this property on South Lincoln Road for many, many years for the athletic fields. They, they are proposing to build this new indoor batting facility to be able to expand their use of, of the athletic activities there. The, on, on the site plan, I know most of you are not, don't see site plans every day. On the site plan that was presented to the planning commission, because this comes to you as a referral from the planning commission, the applicant provided two options for parking. They, they, they currently use essentially part of the neighbor's lot for parking for the site. That's an arrangement of, there's an agreement for that. It's been in place again for many, many years. And, and they also use the neighboring lot for access that comes in on that neighboring, vehicles coming in and out through the neighboring lot. They're proposing to expand the parking lot, part of it will be on the neighboring property, part on theirs. There were two different options for that. Option A would have the building, the proposed building meeting all the setback requirements, but it required shoving the parking over in a way that created an unsafe circumstance that the planning commission found that would create an unsafe circumstance in terms of, and it also would not be consistent with our ordinance requirements for the parking lot layout. And option B that's on that plan pushes the building closer to the rear property line, but, but then allows that parking lot to be situated in a way that is safe, safer arrangement and is also consistent with our parking lot standards. The planning commission did approve the preliminary site plan for this project. You have their motion on page two of the report, page 41 of the packet, where they, they note the, the option B, the parking layout as a preferred pattern. And they actually, in item number five there, their conditions, they actually make a recommendation to you related to the variance. This, this 50 foot, this property is zoned residential, zoned, this is what, the R1 rural residential. The 50 foot rear, rear yard setback is, is really designed for a residential lot, is a residential use. It's the idea of providing a reasonable backyard as an area where the usual things of somebody's backyard can be. And in this case, the property, although it's zoned residential, is not being used as residential. The athletic field use is, is a lawful use of the district. There's nothing non-conforming here. It's lawful use of the property. But, but that 50 feet does create a very wide setback that in this case is up against the, the city's water treatment plant facility, not up against another residence. You have a note from the water treatment plant operator, the public works director about that, where he makes comments on it. So in this case, the, the planning commission is, is giving you something to work with if you choose to use it. They've made a recommendation to you that, that they're finding is that option, the option B plan is the best one. They, they noted in their, their motion existing site conditions and unique circumstances related to the city's operations in the adjacent lot. Although it's not noted in the conditions, they, they did comment during the meeting, and you can see it on, when you look at the pictures and we go out to the site, the topography there, the, the slopes that, that is a significant, unique condition on this property that, that limits where this building can be, where, where activities can be, even where the ball fields could go. And so just to add, I'll add that clarifying element that was not in their actual motion, that topography is a significant issue of this property. So you have, you have their, their action, you have, you have the, the applicant's information that they've provided, you have our report. The same criteria apply. You've seen our report, this one, we, the comments here are generally favorable to, to a variance because it does appear to be warranted based on circumstances unique to the land and, and unique to the surrounding, surrounding property with the, the city's water treatment plant next door. But that, beyond that, I'm happy to answer any questions as we go along.
Okay. Okay. At this point, do, I can ask you, we have a representative of the Sacred Heart, yes?
Good evening. My name's Tim Beatty, I'm the Central Leadership in Development 2257 East Greenfield Road, here on behalf of Sacred Heart. One of the things that I, I did want to go through wasn't, wasn't hit on very hard is the neighboring property which is abutting the requested variance line is the city's water treatment facility specifically where they put the wastewater from the treatment out, it evaporates, lime is taken off, and the farmers buy it and it goes out in the farm fields. So that's, that's an area, and I think I have it in the pictures, that it's a, it's a pond area, it rises, when they discharge, it evaporates, they take the lime off, and then they go through the process over and over and over. That, that is our abutting property. So there was a letter that came from Jason Moore, which is the Director of Public Works, that said the variance request seeks to reduce the rear yard setback from 50 to 25, and specifically we support option B as outlined in their site plan. So the, the city, who is the adjoining property owner, is in favor of, of this request. As far as when you get down to, I mean, you just beat the horse to death on the, on the eight items that you got to go through on the last one, this one I think you're going to have an easier time, mainly because Rodney has already put them down. So if, if you want to just read through his write-up for A through H, I believe he has supporting details for each and every one. You can also refer to my letter, I try and do the same thing, I tend to take a different take on things, but you'll have two different avenues to, to have reasons to approve. So we hope that you view it favorably so that we can move forward and take our site plan approval and go to the next step. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any question for this meeting before we go into discussion?
I have one question. The property's own industrial is what, the city's property?
It's not even zoned industrial, I don't think, is it?
No, it is, it is not, it's a industrial type of use.
Okay, that's what you referred to as industrial type.
Yeah.
We actually, our ordinance basically treats water, this kind of water treatment facility as an essential service, and that's allowed in any zoning district simply by site plan approval. So it, there's no, there's no zoning issue there.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, public entities treat it a little differently because it's needed services.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, were there any questions or comments from the board members? I do see, I mean, it's pretty.
If you want to hope here.
Pardon?
If you want to hope here.
Where am I at here? Oh yeah, okay. Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, here we are. Open the public hearing for the items, any, any, anyone that, three to five minutes to comment, please step to the podium and state your name and, and address for the record. Is there anyone here that'd like to address the board?
There's nobody online.
And there's no one online?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, public hearing is now open. Okay. And the time is 9:13. Thank you. And the center is none, closed public hearing. Is there, and no one is, no one's online? Okay. All right, this, this will be board discussion and ask any questions or comments from board members.
I think the paperwork was very thorough, descriptions of everything. Very, very well done.
I would like it if we could again go through the points and just, I'll write them down, you know, if we.
Yeah, they're, yeah.
Kind of written down.
Are you agree with?
We can make changes if we want to, but I do have a question. Are we voting on option A or option B?
If you're actually, you're actually, in this case, you are simply voting on whether or not to grant the 25 foot rear yard setback variance. That's, that's your component in this.
Okay, the 25 yard, the 50 to the 25.
Yep. It happens that if, if, if the variance is granted, then, then the, the option B design will be consistent with the, with the ordinance in your variance, and they can continue the site plan process.
All right. Frank, it's a coalition simply, quote, use these.
So I, I will say this, I, I know it's lateness of the hour. You, you can, if you choose, cite the staff report, you want to just cite the, the staff report and with the date of October 30th, and, and say that for each of the item, each of the criteria that you agree with the staff's comments. It's, 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 it's nicer if, if your reasons actually end up in the motion than end up in the minutes, because our staff report doesn't end up in the minutes. I think in this case, if you did that, we would have to actually attach the staff report to the minutes. We can do that. So if you want to go that route, we can do that. But also if you want to kind of summarize these, maybe take components of it and create a motion that simply has a number of reasons that are taken out of the staff report, that also can.
I can just summarize it. I, I think everything's pretty well written. I don't think it'll take as long to go through.
Did you want to make a motion then? These items, or do you want, do you want to go through, do you want to summarize and make a vote?
Or make the motion and add the summary as, in the bottom of the motion, and then we can see if it gets seconded? That's what we did before, right? So.
You make a vote.
Can I, can I amend the motion? Motion to just discuss each one of these, and I'll, so that I may write down the reasons for our decision.
And then make a motion.
And then make, yes, and then make a motion to vote.
You, you want to write them down first before we make the motion then?
Yeah.
Then you have to withdraw your motion?
I didn't make a motion.
I thought you did.
I said I could. We could make, we could make the motion and then, you know, just list, you know, these things real quickly, or the opposite way, do the list first, then.
I think, I think Frank wants to make the list, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah.
Check.
Yeah. So, yeah, practical difficulties, I think we've gotten the report. You know, there's the hill which makes it difficult. If they were to strictly stay within the ordinance, the parking lot would be very small and I think even dangerous as Rodney mentioned, so that's certainly a practical difficulty.
That last sentence in item A says due to existing site conditions, it's kind of a long sentence, but you could use that one if you wanted to, because it references the burden that happens.
Due to existing site conditions, that last sentence, would that be satisfactory to you Franklin?
Yeah.
Because you're going to convince someone. All right, and substantial justice?
This would be equivalent to other people that had these kind of geographical situations on their property, we would try and work with them.
This one, I, I will say this, if you're looking at the report, this one, you probably, the first two sentences would, would get you where you want to go. The last one that talks about the neighboring property owner could be included if you wish.
Okay, sentences that start this variance request and a second sentence that will benefit the neighboring property owner.
Yeah, it'll benefit the neighboring property owner to the north for safer, but what I'm looking at isn't consistent with another neighbor that wants to go from a 50 to a 25 because of something.
I would say that it is because they're going, you know, they're getting 25 feet to the property line because they want to have, you know, an, an adequate parking space, which other people can't do if they don't have that hill.
Right, and safer.
Yeah.
Okay, so B.
That's the kind of discussion I like to hear.
Unique circumstances.
The topographic conditions make this a unique property as well as the existing structures on the property that we want to support and expanded and safer parking area.
Yeah, here, even the first sentence is pretty good.
Basically, that's, yeah.
First sentence, first two sentences here. Preservation of property rights.
First sentence?
First sentence, properties have the right to construct a principal building on a R1 zone property?
This one actually, my suggestion would be is to, really use the second sentence.
Oh, build a larger, structure larger. It would normally be permitted.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes better sense.
E, public safety and welfare. There's four items there. Should we just use the four items?
You could even probably just use the, the I there if you wanted to.
The first one?
Yeah.
Okay. Not self-created problem, need for the variance, self-created, okay.
This one, although, this is very wordy here, it could be something as simple as problems aren't self-created because it's associated with a planning commission action on the preliminary site plan.
We've got a nice one sentence for G.
Okay, I'm sorry.
G just seems to have just a nice one-sentence reasoning, so I think, unless anyone wants to add anything, I think that works.
It says, we find.
Says it all.
And then H? Minimum necessary action.
Less variance will not give subs, the substantial relief and justice that I think is not just.
So the second sentence?
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect.
We have those, so now we have motion with these, with these amendments, with these standards listed.
Yes.
So I, go ahead.
Yeah, you go ahead.
Okay. I, motion to approve the PV AR 25-02 request for 25 foot rear, rear yard setback variance from the section 3.7 R, R-1 rural residential district, requirements for a principal building located on approximately 6.06 acres of land at 4355 South Lincoln Road, PID 14-028-10-004-01 in the northwest corner of section 28, finding that the variance is consistent with the standards overview in section 14.4. K. 1 of the zoning ordinance for the following reasons. The, the property is presented with practical difficulties due to the topography, existing site conditions. They are unique to this site and the existing uses. Strict compliance with the 50-foot rear yard setback would burden the applicant and future uses of the site by necessitating construction of a less safe and less functional parking lot expansion. Granting the variance would provide substantial justice. This variance request will give substantial relief and justice to the applicant. It will also benefit the neighboring property owner to the north by allowing for a safer and more functional parking lot expansion that serves with both lots. The planning commission's approved option B on sheet through the site plan. Additionally, due to the existing topographic conditions and resulting configuration of the existing ball fields, limited space is available to support the expanded parking area and the new structure in a safe and functional manner without the requested variance. Furthermore, although the variance would decrease the rear yard setback, the discrepancy is not large enough for the owner to build a structure larger than what would normally be permitted on an R1 parcel of the same size, size. The variance is in accordance with public safety and welfare. The granting of this variance will not increase the hazard of fire or otherwise endanger public safety. The, the inconvenience is not self-created, rather this is resulting from a zoning commission Additionally, the planning commission's motion for preliminary site plan approval shows that this variance request has been made by the applicant for reasons other than convenience or financial return. Finally, the granting of a lesser variance will not give the substantial relief and justice to the applicant consistent with justice to other property owners in the same district. That's the motion.
Okay, we have a motion with the.
Support, sorry.
Again, okay, support. What do you prefer these as, the reasons or the?
With those reasons.
Final.
Reasons listed.
Okay, good. All right. Are there any, any questions or comments from the board members? We went through this. Okay, it'd be a roll call vote. Tara, would you please call the roll?
Yeah. Rogers?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
And Barz?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. All right, motion, motion carries. At this point, is there any other business? Any other business?
We have, we have one either item of business.
What is this, adoption of the 20, oh, okay, I'm sorry. That's got to be, we have the, this meeting schedule for the ZONE Board Appeal. We're, we're scheduled to meet every month. Whether we meet every month is, depends on how much activity you have.
Actually, if I may.
Yeah.
Let's explain. You know, we, we ask you to be available on the first Wednesday of every month. It happens that, that 2026 is an election year, and so there are several dates that, that hit, hit elections, it's August and November, for example, in 2026, where this building, this room will be in use, it will not be available to us. In addition, there are some holidays, July the 4th, for example, that, that fall right around our meetings, and so we, we have, we did not include those dates in your, in your calendar, so you actually see there, there are eight dates listed. One of those dates is actually the annual joint meeting of all the boards and commissions. That's our Board of Trustees invites all of our, our board and commission members to come together and meet with, meet with them, and we usually do that over Jameson Hall, and it's, it's a very interesting meeting, I highly recommend it. So, but, but you'll have, you have right now seven other potential regular meeting dates. We can always try to schedule a special meeting. If somebody has an application and, and we're in one of those gaps, then, then staff will contact you and we'll see if we can find a, a date that, that works for everybody to have a special meeting. But as, as, as currently proposed, there are eight dates total that you see there on the calendar. So if you're, if you're comfortable with the dates, these are all the first, other than joint meeting, they're all the first Wednesday of the month. Joint meeting, I think it's the third Wednesday.
Motion to, do we need a motion approved?
We have a motion approved, the 2026 scheduled meeting date as presented.
Support.
Support. And McDonald. Any discussion? All those who can say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have the extended public comment, is there, are there anybody, any, anyone in public that they're going to speak? Anybody online?
There's nobody online.
CNN extended public comment is now closed. Final board, are there any final comments from the board members?
Just that I hope the Moreys can get everything rezoned.
It makes it difficult when you have to try to find things, the items, the reasons, and hopefully they can resubmit it and satisfy everything for us, so that makes it, makes it difficult for everybody. Well, it makes it difficult for us, but it makes it difficult for Rodney, you know, you're stuck.
It's not easy to be unpopular in the room.
Pardon?
It's not easy to be unpopular in the room, but I mean, we have to stick to the parameters before us.
Yeah, it is what it is. Okay, for the business, the meeting's adjourned at 9:28.
Right, thank you.
So I, as you.